Bringing in to cat TV.
I think we oughta gone one of these reality shows.
Wait a minute, I'll ask you something later.
Hey, there's a football game on tonight, so.
No. Denver.
Okay, guys, we'll call the Powell Select Board meeting, regular meeting Thursday, September 5th, 2013, at 7:00 PM. For the agenda approval, approval of minutes 8:29:13. Warrants, mail, Road Foreman's monthly board meeting, under old visit revisit auditor monthly meeting, board meeting, and no business under new. Take a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes 8:29:13.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Warrants. Ah, accounts payable in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, five hundred forty-one dollars and forty-three cents. Your large one here is Main Street Bridge down in Powell Village at forty-eight, one-fifty. Then you got your lawn mowing and a few other things in there, but that was your large in tax mapping at twenty-seven ninety-one. Payroll nine, one thirteen to nine, six thirteen, in the amount of five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty-three cents. Those are your warrants. Need a motion? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye with obsession on accounts payable. Picnic fund. Okay, mail. And by the way, I will announce if anybody is curious, I should've saved the page, but we did have some donations come into the picnic. And with that, the cost of the picnic to the town was one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty-three cents.
That's, that's great.
Yeah, pretty reasonable. I'd say there was a, a fee on the porta potty of a hundred dollars, but you know, we had a little over a hundred people, uh, didn't do an exact head count, but that's pretty good. Pretty good fun for that lot of people and so on. So anyways, thanks for everybody that was involved. Okay, we have a, in our mail, a letter from Turning Point Center of Bennington. Says, dear members of the select board, the Turning Point Center of Bennington County opened its doors ten years ago, October seventeenth, on such an occasion to celebrate. Also, it's time to review what has been accomplished. Uh, as a result of this process of honest self-appraisal, we realize our failure to work to establish and maintain a working partnership with elected officials through the county. In an effort to address this shortcoming, we'd like to meet with you and see what role we can play in assisting your community and members and their families who struggle with addictions. Uh, it goes on to say that over the next several weeks, they'll be reaching out for, to us for an effort to begin a process of collaboration. Together, we can determine how we might be best put our services to work to help your constituents in struggle of the devastation of their own or somebody else's addictions. So what they're gonna try to do is apparently set up a meeting with us to discuss what they do. Okay, Green Mountain Forest request. They have a request to use the school gym for a public hearing, ten, nine, thirteen. Uh, they've tried to set up this meeting for October ninth at the schoolhouse. The federal government does not carry insurance, it is self-insured. So that's an apparent problem. Could the town possibly supply an insurance for its meeting there or at another place? There'd be around thirty people attending, so we usually sign for the insurance to have meetings at the school, or we could suggest another place, what is the board's pleasure on this one?
What's the group again?
Green Mountain Forest.
They were the ones that were here.
Yeah, it was about to say, we're never here.
Probably the school would be the easiest. Okay, motion and second?
Second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that'll authorize me to sign the authorization slip with that motion. Understood? Okay. Okay, delinquent tax report. Always fun to get to these things. We start out before penalties and interest at a hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three, sixty-two, and with all the above, we end up at one eighty-four, five forty-five, twenty-seven. Delinquent tax report. In our sewer, these are broke down in payment schedules on which one is each payment, so I'll just shoot to the total of thirty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-eight, eighty-one. Zoning administrator log, eight eighteen, number of applicants received, eight, accepted, eight, return zero, verification, one, permits granted, I think four, uh, the rest of it, I am not able to read. I would please suggest to the zoning administrator to write just a little clearer or make a copy more legible because I know my eyes are getting weaker, but from the second line down, it's pretty much a blur.
I understand from the paper, we're gonna have a pet hotel in town?
A possibility, yes.
A new building going up, uh, along Route seven as well? That'll be interesting.
Okay, annual meeting at Vermont City Towns and Leagues for males, ma- yeah, mayors, managers, administrators, select board, city councilmen, clerks, and treasurers. August twenty-eighth, we might've missed that. Yep, history on that one, okay. And that is our mail. Well, you took long enough to say that. You couldn't figure that word off the bat? That is our mail, folks. Road Foreman, come on up and enlighten us. Yeah.
Sit right up there, Casey, so everybody can hear you.
Everybody can hear me 'cause I'm right here, right here next to the table, close enough. You mentioned that, uh, the bill was paid on, uh, the repairs of the bridge.
Yes.
Uh, the...
Quite extensive, I thought.
The original quote was fifty-five thousand dollars, and that was for taking up the three inches of concrete and, uh, doing the repairs on two hundred and forty square feet of bridge deck. The, uh, bridge deck does not have a three-inch concrete, um, surface on it. There was basically a repair in nineteen seventy. What they did is they went through and they scaled all the bad spots up, and then they poured a layer over it, but it's all, the bridge deck must've been really bad shape when they did it.
Dale and I did actually go down and take a look at it.
So the repairs they did was five hundred and fifty square feet. That's why the cost was, and most of it was what they call class three, all the way through the deck. They would pay a lot of rebar and...
Okay.
The gentleman that was working on the bridge, of course, they do it for a living, so he said that the bridge deck is good for five years, but he showed me all the cracks that were in the deck, or those cracks that are in the deck is on the surface that was poured in nineteen seventy, so everything below that is what is really deteriorating. So, uh, what's gonna need to happen is we're gonna have to start budgeting so that we can put a new deck on the bridge. The bridge is a hundred and seventy-eight feet long, and right now, from curb to curb, it's twenty-three and a half feet wide. And the people that I've talked with that came down to actually look at the bridge said that the I-beams, actually, it's, it's a rolled beam bridge, so that the, the, the bridge beams are actually in pretty good shape. But in order to be able to put another deck on that is actually thicker, so that we can put a concrete overlay over the top to seal the bridge with membrane, uh, the, the beams will have to be inspected first. And also, uh, there is a potential of going another couple of feet wider on the bridge, that we can make the approach on the opposite, on the northwest hillside wider to make it easier to turn onto the bridge. But that's...
How much state involvement do you, I know we're reaching out 'cause we're looking at a few years down the road.
The state will, I think, will inspect the beams. They do an annual inspection every two years to give the town an idea of what, uh, shape the bridge is in. And I've got all the ones for the last fifteen years, but it's basically, I think, is actually, it's either in fair shape or poor shape. I can't remember exactly which, because poor is not very poor, or there's, there's two or three different...
There's a lower level than poor.
There's a couple of lower levels than that.
What's the load limit on that bridge? Is it ten thousand?
Can you follow in?
It's, uh, twenty, twenty-four ton with, uh, four ax- or two axles, twenty-six ton with three axles, and twenty-seven ton with, with three axles. At least that's what was posted on the bridge. The actual, uh, bridge report states that there's no, there's no posting, there's no weight limit. I know there's a weight limit, but it, it says it doesn't need to be posted. But what my suggestion is, is, I know you've been down to take a look at a couple of them. We should probably all take a, uh, a night, go down and take a look at it. I can explain to you everything that they explained to me, and we can start planning accordingly. Well, we're on that subject then. Next week is our third meeting.
Would anybody like to do this a little earlier than average? Six-thirty-ish?
Be a second meeting. This is the first meeting.
Yep, right, right, right.
Put on her at six o'clock next Thursday?
Well, Rich may.
I'll be a little late, but...
Okay, you don't mind at six-ish?
No, I'll just come right from work.
Okay, why don't, why don't we try that? Does that sound all right with you?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. We'll schedule that.
And that is on next Thursday.
That'll...
Twelve.
Be the twelfth, yep. Six o'clock at the bridge, home.
That's the one by the library?
Yes.
As for the asphalt approach that was repaired, uh, the contractor that actually was awarded the bid was awarded the bid to resurface the bridge in both approaches. And that, since we're, we can't put an overlay over the top of the bridge and do the other approach, we just had thirty-two ton or whatever, and he called me just about six o'clock and said that he wouldn't be able to do it. So we're gonna need to find another contractor, and, uh, my suggestion is I've got, uh, uh, there's a couple contractors that, uh, I can get ahold of to find out if it's something that they can do as directly as possible.
I think that's a good idea. Ask a couple local guys if they can...
Thirty-two ton.
'Cause it's a small area and see if they can do something.
So just, just for clarification, he bid this job, and he did all the work that was specified on the bid?
For doing just the bridge repair, yes.
And he can't do the...
He's not, no, the blacktop...
This was a separate, separate...
Blacktop contractor was, was...
And we're, we're in breach 'cause he can't do the total amount that he bid out because of the section can't be done.
Okay.
And we need just one piece. Do, do a small piece. So you're looking for approval from the board to get a couple bids from the local?
Yeah, I don't, uh, you know, last, when we do a mile a row, of course, that's a whole different animal because they're laying down two thousand ton of the whack.
Right.
Uh, you're, you're probably gonna be in the range of a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five dollars a ton in that region, depending on, uh, depending on who does it.
Well, we need to move on that 'cause our weather window is narrowing up on us, so...
Also, they're gonna stop making blacktop.
Probably, uh, just to try to save us some money, I might even take and, uh, they built ramps onto the, as well, it's about six feet to three inches to get onto the bridge and get off the old blacktop, so I, I'll probably just take the backhoe down there and, and pull that stuff out, and when they show up to actually do the paving. They'll take a roller and just roll over it and then start the paving.
Couple of concerns that, uh, some townspeople brought up to me was the drop. One gentleman said he almost saw a motorcycle dump it because he didn't realize there, like, is, should there be more signage there?
There's, yeah, there's actually no signage. I put a cone in the center of the road to indicate that there's something...
Do we have any signage at the shop that you could, you could put up there? Bump, uh, caution, slow down, anything?
Uh, slow, maybe.
Okay, uh, because I really think there should be some signage there, and, um, is there anything that could be done with that drop-off, especially for motorcyclists?
I really don't wanna put any more material in there because it's right, uh, about six feet away from the blacktop and six feet away from the bridge, it's the grade. Where they're gonna be blacktop, and so if I put more in there, I'll have to take one back off.
It's only gonna be another week.
Yeah, so in a couple of weeks, it'll be blacktop.
Not even a week, I mean, if I, if I make some calls tomorrow morning, I might be able to get it the first thing in, you know, in a week, depending on the weather. I can put out, I should probably put up a few more cones to indicate to first some people that there's, uh, caution.
Yeah, some, some signage, some cones, something to, to make it more visible, I think, would please the people.
Originally, when they, when they get, they got done, they feathered it back good, and it was a nice smooth transition, pretty much.
It's quite a bit of traffic.
There is.
Thank you, Casey.
Okay, so you have this board's approval to go ahead with this and get that?
Okay.
Under motion, correct?
Now, with the approval, are you just gonna get something and get it done at the best price, or does it have to come back to us?
I think we oughta lay it right on him.
It'll, it'll be, I know what blacktop costs, I know what it costs to mobilize and that kind of thing, so it's...
Are we gonna set a limit on this, though, or...
Uh, it's just thirty-two to thirty-four ton. Right now, I got, my figure is a three inches is thirty, thirty-two ton. Uh, a contractor will command, and it'll be a ton or two or three or four different, but it's within that region, and if blacktop is eighty-five dollars a ton, eighty-five times thirty-two or thirty-four or thirty-six.
And this is money we had set aside to do this, to start with, it's just, it's not, it's not continuous.
Actually, we have a grant.
Yeah, I said, I was a grant for that bridge.
To do this, and, and right now, it's looking that we probably aren't even gonna spend half of what they're paying.
Right, 'cause we're not doing the volume that we planned, so...
But the, uh, most important thing was to get the bridge deck safe, so that we can get our budgeting squared away, and get enough money.
Little breathing room.
'Cause I was told that, uh, just to replace the deck, there's a couple different options. If you get a temporary bridge, a temporary bridge is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars just to borrow the bridge, to have somebody set it up. If you do one lane at a time, it's gonna narrow one lane down to, uh, it's just about ten feet, which is basically half the width of a town highway, but when you put a Jersey barrier in there, you're gonna be taking less than that.
Big time.
So that's another thing that, another option we'll have to look at, but, uh, there's other steps that have to go involved, but the, the, uh, the gentleman told me that a bridge that size, a little bit wider, guardrails, curbs, is in the neighborhood of six hundred thousand dollars. Well, the Powell Bridge?
Yeah.
That's what, two point three million?
Yep, in what, eleven years?
Yeah, yeah.
Like that, could we play with that?
So black and the blacktop, go ahead and get it done.
Yeah, the blacktop's, we're, we've got the money through that grant, plus it's gonna help the bridge because the pounding coming out of that and coming onto the bridge doesn't help it either, so...
So how many years will this buy us on this bridge?
Uh, hopefully five.
Hopefully five.
Each year, we would budget, um, porch the amount that he mentioned down the road. I mean, I can get, uh, I can get contractors to, to quote what the bridge deck would cost to replace it today, but it's not gonna do any good five years from now.
Right, exactly.
And, uh, the other thing is, is, you know, there's a lot of inspection that's gotta be done first. The I-beams have to be, or the old beams have to be inspected first.
Yeah, 'cause we don't even know what that's gonna bring.
The piers were worked on fifteen years ago, the buttments were worked on, I think, along in some areas at that point, and like I say, in nineteen seventy, they did a, a whole, well, I don't know if you wanna call it a resurface, but they, they put a, uh, basically what it looks like is they put a Band-Aid over a, an old deck. It's a nineteen, uh, forty-eight is when the bridge deck was actually laid there.
Yep.
And you know, it's, uh...
Apparently, it should've been watched a little closer back in the seventies on what was actually done.
Well, you know, they, they did things a lot different in the seventies, and you could tell just by the kind of concrete that they used, the, the stuff that they put on in nineteen seventy was pretty, pretty good concrete, but all the hairline cracks are where it's, it's, it's moving.
Okay, not what we wanna hear, but something we gotta hear.
And like I say, there's a lot of, there's, there's some more avenues that I can take to, like, you know, in, uh, five years from now, I can just keep filing for this grant.
Right.
But there's only so much money that we're allowed to be able to get out of this, this style of structures grant. And, uh, they're not gonna wanna give it all to one town.
Right, yeah, 'cause they got a lot of bridge stuff going on.
Well, they have a lot of towns. This is for towns all over Bennington County, is divided up amongst all those towns.
And then what happens if another Irene comes along within five years? Lot of ifs.
Well, that's, that's female stuff there. That's, uh, that's a total different animal.
We will work toward it and go as we can, that's all.
Well, every, uh, January, when we do our budgeting, uh, we'll be mentioning that, by that time, I'll have a lot more information on, you know, the avenues we have to take, and, uh, is there, is, is there any different grants that we can get, or is there, uh, you know, whatever, whatever it's gonna take to get it replaced.
Good. Anything exciting happening with our storms, our back roads, and good things like that?
You know, the same, you know, when you get two inches of rain in, you know, three hours, it doesn't do any, doesn't do anything any good, but, uh, you know, we've been having some pretty good, uh, luck, so, and I'm gonna do some more or two, and, uh, I'll give you an example on Lad Road of, uh, Eddie Race's house. We put a culvert across the road there, it was the last year or the year before, and we've been standing, we've been cutting the ends of the, of a culvert off, and standing it straight up on the grate on the top, keeps it so there's not a big hole.
Right.
And, uh, the water comes over through it, silt's in, I try to keep the, it cleaned out so that when the silt does come down through, it like lays there so the grater can actually reach it and pull back up in the road. And so basically, what you're doing is you're just getting water. The grates keep the leaves and stuff out, and the culverts stay clean, and I don't have to go around and keep digging them out every time it rains hard, and...
Good.
So there's a three or four of those we're gonna put up Lad Road to get rid of some of those real big holes along the edge of the road. It's hard because it's all ledge. Ledge comes right down at an angle, and it's, it's a difficult area to do it, but we're gonna give it a shot. We put a couple culverts in on Hidden Valley, got one more to do at some point here, hopefully before, uh, before fall, because, uh, there's an eighteen-inch culvert that crosses the road right below, uh, Atwood Drive, and a lot of water from Atwood Drive, and there's a culvert that crosses the driveway right there next to the culvert that's fifteen inch. It's a pretty good stream that comes down through there when it rains hard, too, so that culvert's definitely gonna be a two-footer, so that's gonna have to be replaced.
What about fall grading of the roads?
They're in the process now. We've been down to White Oaks, uh, they did Lad today, Man Hill South yesterday, and today I went up and cleaned the water bars out, 'cause you can't get in there with a grater on a narrow road to dig out the, you can get the, the, the silt that comes into the bottom of this, there's, there's cutouts that go out the road. You can't get in there with a grater to get it out. You get some of the silt, but not all of it.
I'll bring up another one, and I know that you haven't had a lot of time, but I'll bring it up 'cause I'm sure there's somebody that wants to hear. Burlington Road, has anything been done on that recently?
Haven't been there yet.
I know you guys have been busy with this other stuff, I just, keeping it on the radar scope to let everybody know.
Just like I said, we're gonna continue on the, on the, uh, cleaning the swales out and, 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 uh, replacing the culverts. We're heading south, uh, so that's...
'Cause I'm thinking of you guys in the winter, too, trying to plow some of this stuff that's pretty hard.
Yeah, but you know, just the culverts that we replaced up there made a world of difference.
We'll get there. I, I still have hopes that when the state and a few other people get into the scenic byway a little more seriously, that that'll be one of our roads that'll hit some pay dirt.
I always see people walking up there.
I've had a couple stop at the shop with different maps of Powell and wanting to bicycle trails, and I've shipped them that direction, and they've come back very pleased that it's, it's beautiful. It's an ideal thing, so...
Probably gets, uh, forty cars a day, and it's nice and quiet. You can even take and walk your dog without having to worry about putting them on a leash.
So I say it's something that's very special, and we have, and we can, I think we can use that to our best ability, and once somebody from the state realizes that this is really a give-me-in-town, that I think we'll get some attention, but I know they're busy with other things right now, too, but we'll keep picking at them.
That, uh, we haven't even had time to put up a lot of sand. We gotta do that here for, for fall, too. But, uh, warehouse has any donors of about half full, shed behind the shop is probably half, so...
Equipment-wise, we're in pretty good shape, mm?
Yeah, uh, haven't had any, nothing major.
Salt?
Salt, we don't, uh, you know, actually, I did make a couple calls to American Rock Salt and, uh, a couple other ones, and I haven't seen any quotes yet. I guess they don't, uh, send any out now until the state actually, uh, uh, state bids, that's how we usually buy our salt, is what the state usually pays for it. Availability-wise, I think it's, I mean, I don't think anybody's used a whole lot of it in the last couple of years, so there's, there's gotta be a lot of it stockpiled somewhere.
Hopefully, the place reflects that.
Yeah, it was, uh, seventy dollars a ton last year, seventy-one, I think it was seventy-one.
Okay. Any of the board got any questions for?
So you'll get some signage up there by the bridge and...
Yeah.
Some more cones, make it more visible, and...
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have. Okay, that's all I have.
I'll get him, I'll get somebody to blacktop that as directly as possible.
Okay, great.
Excellent.
And so we're in suspension meeting for the bridge?
Yep, six o'clock next week, excellent. Thank you.
Thanks, Casey.
Okay. I believe this is-
Old business.
Your old business, revisit auditor monthly board meeting.
Would I, I would like to bring this up because I, I would like to suggest that the board take into consideration seeing, um, all the misgivings that we've been having over the past few, I should say months with the auditors being here on their, on that Thursday night. And and considering the bad, the past, um, record that they have had about being forthcoming with information that we need. Um, and also filing with the state police, as everybody knows, without letting the board know as to what they have submitted to the state police and refusing to turn that information over to the board. I would like to, and so the board can further move on instead of spinning our wheels, I would like to motion that the, um, meetings with the auditors be discontinued. Um, and any information that they have be presented to the board in writing or in copy. So that we can therefore do our job and monitor what they say and if any corrections or any, uh, problems arise, that we may be able to know what we have and how to, how to go about correcting it. So if I could have a motion put to-
To cancel further meetings?
Further meetings with the, with the auditors on the third-
Until further notice.
Well, I just wanna have a question here, is this, how, how long of a period is this gonna be? Is this forever or month, three or?
I, I would say, I'm gonna speak and, cause you're, this is your motion, but temporarily, until we resolve the issues at hand. And hopefully that'll be in a timely fashion of thirty days or more. To be, why don't we put it to be re-looked at in thirty days? In thirty days, put a timeline of re-look at it in thirty days or six weeks or eight weeks. Put a timeframe so there's actual, because we may be able to move along with this quicker if things go right or it may drag.
That is if we get the information.
Correct, that's why I say re-look at it at a, at another date. A month out, month and a half out, whatever you guys feel comfortable with.
Because it's my opinion that while they're here doing what they're doing, they're diverting us from getting our truly job done, is to move the town, get things done for the town. And this has been nothing but a big zero as far as the town, the board being able to get anything done in that respect.
And we're rehashing a lot, things over and over.
Yep.
All right, we have that as a motion. And then we can, if we get a second on it, then we can do a time restraint on it if you'd like.
I'll second it, cause they have a motion a lot of time.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. So I'll call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay. Now, on a timeframe?
I would say that maybe we're in September, I would say until first of the year. Yeah.
It's a pretty, it's a long haul.
Three months?
Yeah, cause we're gonna have to meet with, um, different things on the, um, town report and stuff like that, I, I don't like to see it go out that far. I'd rather put down thirty or sixty days and re-look at it.
Let's do sixty then.
Sixty or six, six weeks or sixty?
Cause that would be two meetings, we went, if we went sixty days, that's two meetings.
Two months.
Yeah, then re-look at it, cause I, I don't wanna shut it out because if there's something that does come up of importance, I wanna be able to have it before us, regardless who brings it or why. I don't wanna rehash what we've already done, I think that's what our whole goal is here is to kinda move forward until we settle what we've got behind us.
I'm game for sixty days.
So being game for sixty days, is that a motion? We'd like to hear if it's a motion, not a game.
I, yeah, no, I make most of sixty days.
Okay, we got a motion for sixty days, do I have a second? You're gonna be the second. Calling the vote, all in favor?
Aye, I'm gonna abstain.
I will go along with it then, I'll go aye. And this can be subject to any emergency that comes up that is detrimental to the operation of the town, obviously. You know, it's not set in stone, but it's has to be something important, okay. With that said, is there anything else before us, gentlemen?
Motion to adjourn, that's the only other thing I can do.
We have a motion to adjourn?
If you have a garden, frost warnings out tonight, get out there.
Y'all ready?
Pick your stuff or cover it up, it's gonna get chilly.
Okay, is that your motion on the second?
That is my motion on the second.
That's second, nobody else has.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. More votes.